Okay, called order the committee of the whole for Thursday, February 1st, 2018. It's a new month, or day one post JDB, or DJB. First order, if I can have roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. Giselle?
Of course I'm here. I've opened it.
I gotta do this.
Just giving you a hard time.
I'm here.
Mr. Garen?
I'm here, too.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
And Mr. Troy?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum with that.
All right, I am here to have some students lead us in the pledge. These are two students that are part of our newly formed student leadership team. So there are 24 students in whole. One student was unable to make it tonight. But these students were selected by their teachers as they live by the respectful, responsible, involved. It's not always academic. But we're meeting right now, once a month, and they're gonna just be, you know, they have the voice of the students and issues that are coming up and everything. So I took that idea from Dr. Rose. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and then they can lead us in the pledge.
I'm Zach Lightsky. I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Eli, and I'm also in eighth grade.
I pretty much assume Bella was the one who couldn't make it. That's why I'm president, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we get to ask you guys to come up here so we can ask you some questions. Besides, your parents get to take pictures, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Here, have a seat here and here with the green lights on.
Oh, it comes with a price, though.
Don't be there at all.
This is so fancy.
You gotta pull something.
This is not sponsored by them.
Yeah, a lot of times we have the little kids here and you can't see them over the monitor, so that's pretty easy there.
That's not a problem for me.
All right, eighth grade. Wow, that's awesome. So you guys excited about the prospect of high school?
I am very excited.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not selling me.
Are you like that excited and nervous sack?
Eh.
Oh, okay.
Hey, you know what? That's a great idea. Why don't you interview each other? I don't have to ask anything of you.
Sounds like a morning radio show.
Yeah, exactly.
Why don't you give us a weather report for today, Zach? So 91 is our high with that chance of clouds and maybe rain.
Now I know why you picked these guys. These are good. These are good. All right, so thanks for coming out, parents. Thanks for bringing them out tonight. New student leadership position, so how'd that all, how'd that all come about? Did the principal ask you? Did you get a letter? Tell me about that.
We just got, received an email saying that we should come down to the cafeteria on a certain day of the month, and then he told us that our teacher had chosen two people from each pod to represent their team throughout the school.
Very cool.
And my math teacher came to me at the beginning of the year, I don't know, we had like first three or four weeks of school, and she pulled me out of class and she told me that I would had been selected for this new leadership team that they were trying out, and they, same as Zach said, they were, told me about how they had selected one boy and one girl from each pod, and I was pretty excited about it.
Very cool, very cool. You missed an opportunity just to call them down and not give them any reason and let them sweat, you know? So what do you think are the biggest issues in middle school, or at least in Marlowe?
I think that one of the issues is just making sure that students feel comfortable and telling the adults what is really going on and not, that's one thing that we're talking about right now is, most of the kids know who's causing the trouble, but not a lot of the kids speak up about it and tell the adults what's wrong and what needs to be fixed. And we're just trying to, we've been talking about how to make the students feel more comfortable as in just speaking up to like administration.
No, it's a great cause, that's great.
A lot of the students in our school are struggling with the confidence to ask questions to teachers and to other adults in the school to figure out what they need to, if they need to fix something, or if they're struggling on like math or something, and to speak up. Some, most students struggle with that.
Yep. What about from, transition from eighth grade to high school? What do you, what do you think, because you're both in that boat?
Yeah.
What do you think the biggest issue or concern there is?
It's a bit overwhelming when we have to choose all our courses at once and then when we don't have a lot of information unless we have siblings or people we know in high school right now, sometimes it's hard to understand what we're going into.
That's a great observation.
Yeah, I think, I think they are doing a really good job. I think it is gonna be a little bit overwhelming, and I think that's, everybody's a little overwhelmed because there's so much information coming at you at once and all the different, different courses you can take, the academies, the honors classes that you can take. It's a lot of information, but I think they're doing a pretty good job of handling and getting, getting the information to us the right way.
Okay. What do you think is going really well at Marlowe?
Eli, you can answer this question first.
I mean, there's a lot of good things going on at Marlowe. I mean, there's always, I think our extracurriculars are really awesome, like our, our sports teams are really involved, the extracurricular music activities, like the musical, we're both in the musical right now and we really love it, I mean.
Which one is that?
The Little Mermaid Jr.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And when is it?
On March 16th and 17th.
Okay, write that down, everybody. March 16th and 17th.
On the 16th it's at 7, and then on the 17th it's at 3 and 7.
Cool. And you are what?
I'm a Prince Eric.
Oh, wow, okay, so yeah, pretty lead role. Good, good job.
Thank you.
All right, do you have any questions of us as a, as a board?
Not that I can think of right now. Zach, do you have any questions? Nope. Actually, we have a question.
Oh.
What do you see for the future of District 158?
You know what? That's a great question, and I think if you asked every board member, you might get a slightly different answer. Obviously, in the immediate future, we're looking to hire a new superintendent.
Yeah.
And, and set, set the direction for the next five to 20 years, depending on how long, you know, the superintendent stays with us. But I think it's important that we take technology and build technology offerings for the future. I think each individual or personalized learning plan is important, and that everybody gets the ability to learn at the speed and the way they want to learn and the way that's best for them.
Yeah.
And I see that and technology blending together.
Oh, I really like that. I'm taking part in that new competency-based learning. Are you doing that, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're both doing that in high school. Hey, I got a new friend. But I'm really excited about that because it's giving me and him to a, a new, a different way to learn, and I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. It's a different way to go through high school.
I, I'm excited about the new competency thing because I'm hoping to go into animal science field.
Okay.
And with the classes for science, we can build our projects towards more like animal-based things than, less than like the human brain or the human exoscope, yeah.
Oh, that's a great focus. Well, stay up there. We want to take a couple of pictures with you, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adios.
This is exciting. I don't think I can do this every, every Thursday.
Oh, my, Eli. I feel important.
We'll keep them seated, okay?
I want to say "Mister" because he's so tall and I'm so full.
Well, this way you can stand right in the middle.
Very well done.
Yeah, that was a good job.
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you.
You got the big camera.
Official photo.
Outstanding. Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Thank you. Awesome. This is exciting.
Get some of these chairs for school, huh?
Yeah.
About 40 minutes into the school day, you'll be sleeping, though.
I think that's what I should do is my, our leadership.
Better chairs. Chairs.
I'm sorry, our time is up.
All right.
Really?
Very good. Okay. Item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No.
If anybody that wants to make a public comment. Do we have any public? We do, we have a couple. All right, revision and adoption of the agenda, seeing as how it's the committee of the whole, there's usually not much to change. Anybody have any changes, updates? All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion of the second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that takes us on to curriculum and instruction. Mr. Garen?
Yes, and we have one intense item here today, 5 dot 1, summer school, and I understand you have a comment, perhaps.
Yeah, no, so in there is the memo from Dr. Schlifter. With the Fourth of July holiday falling where it does and looking at when school ends, the recommendation is that this summer, session one and session two would be two, three week, five days a week instead of four, four days a week. To get the same amount of seat time in there, if you will, it would be that we would increase the day by 18 minutes. I know that sounds kinda funny, but it would be, so it would be eight to 12, 18, Monday through Friday for those three weeks. But again, that would be the same amount of time that they would have in the past. Then, looking at the summer ICE, which is one of the literacy type programs that was offered at the elementary school, or schools, is that we, the Huntley Library has a summer program, we've got the summer ICE, looking at the goals and the things that both of them are trying to promote, they kind of really align well with one another. A partnership and discussion have already started about how we can work together along with that. And so the summer ICE won't look the way it does. We would like to really partner with the library. What things do they do well? They have a lot of the incentives in getting the kids to read. How can we help? Maybe through, it could be through some parent education. All of that's being worked out with that partnership with the, the library at this time. And so, looking at, it's gonna kind of just design that whole program from scratch with, with both entities there. So pretty excited about that, that partnership and working together as a, as a community to reach those goals. The other program that we would also have is the ESY. We know that there was some comments or concerns that were brought up. Typically, ESY is in line with the other summer school. And so looking at that, because of where the Fourth of July, it was originally discussed that we would go ahead and do that as three weeks, we are at this time recommending that we'll go ahead and still keep the same structure we did last year with the four weeks, four days a week. The days will alter just a little bit because of that Fourth of July, but that we will be, I know that both directors have already reached out or in contact with the parents who had the public comment, trying to find out more about what are those concerns. That was also from one program, but there are many programs in ESY. And to really make sure that if we are making changes, either lengthening it or shortening it, that we're looking at all of the programs and the needs of all students, that would be in ESY. So by just saying that we're going to stay the way it has been proposed in the past, we want the, you know, parents, families and community to know we will be looking at this and getting their feedback to see if there will be changes for next year that can better address the needs in the, in the various programs. Any questions?
Does that cause kind of having, is any type of concerns, just operation, operationally, logistically, having kind of two different schedules of sorts, or is that a concern?
No, I think, not so much. It's, it's only that one week over that Fourth of July, and, and some of those, we can also look at the way that it falls. Part of it is we pick the day of when summer school is going to start, or ESY, based on not knowing if we're gonna have any snow days. I think pretty soon here, we may know if, if we're going to be looking at having any additional days or whatnot. So we can also look at the, the ESY start, or, and maybe we'll, you know, could start a couple days earlier than that next week. But we, for all of the programs, whether it is through our, our programs of enrichment or the high school, what we'll be doing with the, the summer ICE or the library program, we'll always work with Doug. That, that's probably the part that could cause some issues, is the facilities and the cleaning and the projects that are going on. But we already know what the dates are of those big projects, so this component here will not, it's, it's only four days in, in that one week, so it shouldn't overlap at all with any concerns.
And with, with the Midwestern weather pattern, you'll get confirmation on the snow days May 1st?
May, maybe May 1st, yeah. If we get one, it's Henry's fault because he just brought that word up here a little bit ago, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, then I'd recommend we move that forward to the meeting of two weeks from now and transfer the baton over to Human Resources.
All right, item six, Human Resource Committee, one item, agenda item, item 6 dot 1, HR updates. Mr. Zier.
Good evening. Just a quick HR update, we are ramping up into the recruiting season. Our main focus as we go into this year, as we get the dual language program off the ground for next year, is recruiting our dual language, bilingual endorsed teachers, and we have some, experienced some early success in that. So I'm very happy to be, to be announcing that as we get ready to start the dual language program next year. Business as usual, as we have employees leave and come into the organization throughout the year, and then just had some reports that needed to be filed as we moved through. The main thing I want to talk about this evening is the last bullet on the memo, and that is a, a program called Evaluise. Last year, we discussed in here, or I discussed in here a little bit, about moving to an online evaluation module. Right now, we are still using Microsoft Word documents, Google Docs, to do evaluations, observations with teachers and certified staff. We did run a pilot last year with this company. We took a look, myself and a few other principals, took a look at some other companies, and this was the company that essentially rose to the top, and we're very excited to start moving forward with them for the upcoming school year in 1819. It is gonna allow our administrators to streamline the evaluations, to record evidence in a much more efficient manner, also gonna allow teachers to use a much simpler tool. So at this point, we're kind of, through our pilot, we got all of our tools uploaded into Evaluise, and so we're ready to launch. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get everyone uploaded that needs to be uploaded, and usernames and passwords, some training of the administrators, but it's a pretty straightforward program and something we're very happy to be moving forward with. Mark has budgeted for us to have this for the next three years, moving forward.
Doug? Any questions from anyone? Okay, just a quick question, I noticed you mentioned the lane changes. Is there just a sense on higher or lower volume in terms of activity there?
So for the mid-year?
Yeah.
It was average. We had five. So the lane changes that happened mid-year, for those who have achieved a master's degree, and we had five that came through, and that's maybe a little higher than normal, but nothing out of the ordinary there for folks making a lane change. So as we get into the fall, obviously, we have a lot more lane changes that take place because you can do that in multiple lanes, but the mid-year contractual language only allows for someone who's receiving a degree.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close HR and hand it over to Finance Committee. Mr. Quagliano.
Okay, Finance, 7 dot 1 for payables. We have our purchase orders and press checks, accounts payable and disbursements. Any questions, concerns related to those items?
Not here.
Okay, we'll move those forward to the Board for approval. Board meeting, 7 dot 2, Revenue Expenditure Report. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you do have the six-month December 2017 Financial Executive Summary in front of you. Was a very busy month, and a month of December. If you notice, we have a net all-funds operating deficit of $1 million year-to-date, or 11 million for the month, primarily driven by, that is the month where you generally pay our, our bond payments. So 7.2 million of bond payments went out the door when, they're really budgeted in the month of January. But of course, to get them paid on time, we pay them at the end of December, so you'll see that on the front page. At the end of the, at the end of the month, end of the six-month standing, December 31st, we currently have approximately $53 million in cash, in cash and investments. And so because this is a quarterly report, you will see the Treasury report included. The majority of those funds are invested in, in CDs ranging from 30 basis points for our money market account to 1.87 percent, with some of the CD terms up to three years as we've been laddering our investments. So I did want to point that out, and you'll see that in some of the back pages of your report. Looking at the second page, as we always look at health insurance, unfortunately, we had a, a pretty rough month in the month of December. A few large claims came through the pipeline. Claims totaled 656,000 and change, approximately $100,000 over the average of 568,000. So we'll continue to monitor that, but the good news is we are still trending favorable, pretty good. We're trending, trending pretty favorable to the year-to-date numbers, so hopefully we can continue to do so that, so that we can continue to give back favorable rates to our employees year after year. Dashboard, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Most of the line items are, are fairly comparable to prior year. I wouldn't be too concerned about some of the reds there. One of the reds, which we're all familiar with and know about based on prior, prior discussions and prior meetings, is the impact on transition fees. So we are seeing a big slowdown in, in some of those fees coming our way, which will be a concern, and we will have to address that in future years' budgets, which we will do. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the six-month December Executive Summary Report.
Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else with anything? Okay. And that will move to 7 dot 3, Fiscal Reports. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. You do have the fiscal update in front of you. Normally, I would just ask if you had any questions, but I do want to point out that we've got quite a few things coming down the pipeline in three weeks at our February Board of Education meeting. Biggest item there being the budget and five-year plan, so we've been working on that, and that will be draft one of the FY19 budget, as well as, that says FY18, I should say FY19, by the way, as well as the five-year plan. Other items that we will be bringing forward will be the Declaration of Surplus, which we generally do at, at the, the board meetings. But two items that came through recently, I do want to make the board aware of, they will be action items on the February 22nd meeting agenda, and one of those is a reciprocal reporting agreement with local law enforcement agencies. The last time I think the board did that, approved that, that was a five-year agreement, it was five years ago, just recently expired, so we'll be bringing that agreement to you for review and approval at that board meeting. As well as a brief resolution, this is the first time seeing this, a brief resolution allowing our attorney from Kleintorpen Jenkins, who handles our property tax appeals, allowing him to intervene on property tax appeals. I think his, his law firm is asking for, for a resolution that we have that, which is fine, but of course, they need our approval to do so before they can just intervene, so. But, but they would like that resolution passed, and we will get that passed. It's very brief. Other than that, that's my fiscal updates, unless you have any questions on any of the other items.
You, your last thing reminded me to follow up on something that you were working on maybe last year, on how the state handles these, when the property tax appeals come in and then there's a, a change, you, weren't you trying to work on some legislation to try and make that up or something?
Yes.
What's the status of that?
Oh, great, that was, that's kind of a great leading. That is a great leading.
We didn't even rehearse.
You know, and, and I should have noted that. I should have noted that. So I had the opportunity to meet with Senator McConaughey and Leslie, and Leslie, she's a big player here there. You're very important, Eli. And we reviewed the Senate bill. So there is a Senate bill that's currently in assignments, right?
Yes.
Currently in assignments, Senate Bill 1064, and obviously, a very favorable bill to the state of Illinois that if we get this passed, approximately $100 million or more will be coming back to taxing districts in Illinois, in Illinois, primarily for certificates of air and PTAB adjustments. For our school district, it could be anywhere from $200,000 opportunity, depending upon a PTAB adjustment, it could be a million dollars, right? Over the last several years, the amount for which we have not collected within our property, overall property tax extension, has ranged anywhere from 150,000 to 250, 300,000 or more. So it is a very big opportunity, not only for this district, but all districts in the state of Illinois. We feel like it's a very good bill. Where we are right now is I am lobbying for support with the Alliance, and the Alliance is the Illinois Association of School Boards members, the association that I'm a part of, the Association of Superintendents, the Association of School Boards, and the Association of Principals make up the Alliance. In addition to that, we're, we're seeking approval, essentially, also from LUDA. So here's the good news. Well, we know LUDA's on board, my association's on board, the Association for Superintendents, or excuse me, the board, Roger Eddy's on board. We are simply waiting for commitment from the other two associations, superintendents, as well as the principals, which we think we're gonna receive. Once we receive that information, I will share that information in writing to the senator, and we're gonna be rocking and rolling, trying to get support to... as well as the principals, which we think we're going to receive. Once we receive that information, I will share that information in writing to the Senator and we're going to be rocking and rolling, trying to get support to, to get that thing passed as soon as possible. So crossing our fingers that the legwork that we have done is going to pay off, so.
And the impact of that is basically tax, tax bills that should have been assessed become correctly assessed.
Correct.
So it's effectively an under-assessment that is being fixed.
Taxing districts are losing money when really, in essence, they shouldn't be losing money and a lot of it has to do with inefficiencies at the county level.
Uh huh.
Right? Because if things were handled appropriately at the county level, for the majority of it, the PTAB adjustments or maybe assessor mistakes. So school districts, taxing districts are losing money if assessor makes a gross mistake and a refund has to be issued. If that refund is issued, all the taxing districts lose out on that refund. It's no longer collectible or it's no longer spread back to the community for which it would have been if that information was correct in the beginning.
Right.
And PTAB adjustments, well, if the border review at each county resolved those border review items in a timely fashion and they didn't go down state to the property tax appeal board, we wouldn't be losing money either.
Gotcha.
Because the same thing happens.
Right.
Okay? So crossing my fingers.
Right. Again, we're, a little plug for our county.
McHenry County.
Our county is one of the best in the state.
Yeah.
He does a phenomenal job of trying to keep these things from even getting to PTAB. So they, they're very proactive in the manner in which they go about it and kind of a model for what other, like other counties could be like, right?
Correct. Yeah, correct. We're kind of on both ends of the spectrum. We have, McHenry County is one of the best in the state, literally based on the numbers from the Illinois Department of Revenue and Kane County, one of the worst in the state.
Not so good.
Which is how this all was discovered.
Right.
Because it, the numbers weren't making sense. So we dug into it and hopefully, we can get a bill out of it.
Okay. Anything further for Mr. Altmeier on the fiscal updates? Okay, and then any, any questions on the activity funds that's under this section? If not, that's fine, we'll move that forward. Seven dot four, establishing the fiscal year. I don't think there's any debate.
You want me to say anything on that?
Not really.
Okay, good.
There's nothing to be said. Any, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
And we'll move that forward. All right, you have nothing there.
No.
Sorry, don't mean to cut you off, but.
I was kidding.
Not considering like a retail calendar or anything?
Exactly. Can we change our fiscal year end?
No.
It's just not good for me.
No. Seven dot five, designation of person to prepare a tentative budget. I can't imagine who that might be. So is there any questions or concerns about that?
Can we learn more about him?
Can we make sure he's qualified?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay there. So we'll move that forward, we're fine. And then seven dot six, the Extracurricular Committee recommendations, would love to hear about that.
Well, thank you very much. As we do every year on an annual basis, the Extracurricular Committee gets together several times during the year to evaluate the current stipends being paid as well as any new positions that are needed for, you know, curriculum enhancement, safety reasons, you know, number of kids within a certain program or a certain sport. And this year's no different, so the committee and myself got together in the month of January and came up with the tiered recommendations as you have in front of you in your memo. And so the net, the net additional stipends that the committee is recommending and administration agrees with that recommendation approximates $15,633 net. There were three high school position stipends that are no longer needed, so working with the high school, they said, you know, we don't need these stipends, we, but we do have some other needs obviously that are being addressed in the tier one recommendation above. I'd love to be able to recommend tier two and tier three at this time, but budget permitting as we always do, right now, we are only recommending to move forward with the tier one recommendation. There's boys volleyball, there's a buddies club, there's some after-school and chess clubs at the high school that have been very successful, a lot of participants. The high school feels very good about those clubs. For the first time in a long time, we have some elementary clubs at Conley that we would like to pay out some stipends on. One of them is the broadcasting club and there's 83 participants and it's a year-long club and they're doing a great job over there at Conley.
Cutting for Mr. Guerin's job.
Yeah. So yeah, maybe you could have them all on the show, that would be great. Yeah.
Sounds great.
I've got a suggestion of two middle school kids, we can add to that group too.
Yeah. So with that, I'd like to make the recommendation as you have in front of you to approve those tier one recommendations. I do want to note though, there is a, there is a minor error within the number, which I will have to update before the board meeting. The boys volleyball club, there are two positions, but those positions are going to be laddered. They're both not going to be at the same rate and because of that, one of the positions will be a little higher than the 2022, so I will have to modify this number. So if the board does need a final number tonight, I'm not going to be able to give you that final number for the tiers and we'll have to pull that maybe and put it as an action item at the board meeting or we just approve the tier one recommendations.
How big is the discrepancy?
Probably 800 to $1,000, if that.
Okay.
Do I have anybody here from the high school? No, I do not.
Right.
Brad, do you remember that number?
See Brad.
Yeah, you're pretty, you're pretty important.
I don't remember that number.
Yeah. It's, it's in another lane within the, it's in another lane in the, in the schedule. Yeah, and I was, I was just giving, I was given that after this was created and pushed to the community.
All right, and you only got, and you're tier two and tier three, you only got three items in there. Are you sure you don't, I mean, you want to hold back on that stuff? There's a lot. I mean, I don't know what you guys think about it, but.
Yeah, let me think about it.
So, so what's going to push you over the top to get tier two and tier three and spend an extra $2,480?
You know, I, I do do the budget, so I could probably make it work.
Okay.
To your point. Historically, historically, at this time of the year, we've only approved the tier one.
Okay.
If, if, if the board so chooses and would like to make the recommendation to approve all three tiers, I, I'm on board with that. I think from a materiality standpoint, I am fine with it based on the discussions we had for those three additional clubs.
I, given, given the numbers of the financials and given the number of students that would benefit from this, I think it, I think it would be worth just doing all at once.
Okay. I think so too. It's, it's not worth holding back three different positions that.
I don't have an issue just combining them all as to in the one tier.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
The ECC will thank you.
Okay. Well, it's.
As I.
So I would, I would recommend that if, if the committee chooses to move that forward, it'd be moved off a consent agenda with the.
I agree, yeah.
With the numbers.
Anyway, and then I'll modify.
Yeah.
I'll modify the memo.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, so if we could do that, yeah, let's move it forward off consent.
Yeah, and I apologize for that.
There's not, no apologies.
No.
Shouldn't have happened. There's, it's, I get it.
Miscommunication.
Just looking at it and going, all right.
Your punishment will be to have to prepare the budget for another year.
Yeah, thank you. Precisely. Okay, so was there any other further questions on that item? If not, we're on the building and grounds. Mr. Troy.
Okay, item eight dot one, O and M Annual Report, very comprehensive as usual. Mr. Rincosek, anything there to highlight?
People stop, people planning, the party staff, the facilities are maturing. A lot of the building materials life cycles are, you know, getting near their end or, or have and we've replaced them. We've tried to maintain the facilities as status quo from the day we opened them if we can help it. More inspection cycles, minor staff increases a few years ago to help us with the repair load of maturing facilities. As far as our O and M department efficiencies, if you reflect on some of the numbers in the fiscal area without capital projects, if you look at our overall increase in operating expense besides capital projects and energy aside, we've only increased an overall total of 2.2% over the last 14 years, so we beat inflation a little bit there. Gas and electric, we've done awesome. We've cut our, in the last 13 years, we actually cut our cost per square foot about half. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board or the, I'm sorry, are the committee or the board? No questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, the comment I'll make is, yeah, I mean, it's, I just go back to when this report was, you know, from some of these years and I just remember what I thought these costs were going to increase and it's amazing how well you've done at keeping these costs in check. I mean, they're nowhere near what, where I thought they would have been, so just a phenomenal job of managing those costs in that area, so.
I do have a question down here. I did notice, I believe it's page 14 of 15, we have a lead day custodian vacancy at Chesapeake. Is that something that you're, that's planning to be filled?
Yes, Mr. Zare has been working on it, he tells me.
It will be filled very soon.
I thought you were going to hand it off to Jen.
We got it, Jen.
Okay.
I literally just signed off on it before I came down here.
Okay.
So we're moving on it.
Great, thank you. All right, any additional questions?
If I may, if I may draw your attention to page 12, that is our list of Energy Star ratings for Huntley 158 facilities. I don't know if Mr. Rincosek was going to address this later, but I would like to draw your attention to the fact that six of our buildings recently received Energy Star certification from the EPA.
Yeah, we covered that last month.
Well, the announcement just went out to the public last week, so I want to draw your attention to that again. Thank you.
We did discuss it last month, yeah.
The official, the official Energy Star might have been given recently, but the ratings were discussed last month, yeah.
A lapel patch with a big star on it.
I have some updated statistics from last month, if you'd be interested in hearing them, about how rare it is that we have so many Energy Star rated facilities.
Well, look, it's time for O and M updates.
How rare is it? Okay, any further questions? All right, we'll move on to eight dot two. Thank you for that annual report. O and M updates, anything to highlight on here?
We have a couple of bids that are in the midst of being released. Life safety system inspections, fire extinguishers, fire alarm, fire sprinkler, kitchen fire suppression systems. We bundled that a number of years ago. Contract's expired, that's out to bid for the coming period. That's, it'll be a three-year contract with an opportunity to renew for, for further extensions for a while as spelled out in spec. We have the water heater at Marlowe has seen the end of life. It's a monster, it's $35,000 to buy an exact replacement list price. This happened at Heinemann a number of years ago already, so we got a little more mileage out of Marlowe, but same thing's happening. When we did Heinemann, we found a more efficient way to do it, to operate and it actually, actually cost less first costs as well. And so we're out on the street to get bids for that similar installation with the newer, couple of years newer efficiency kind of say boiler. Chesapeake Martin asphalt project, which we visited with you a bit ago, is in the final throes of design development of the exactness of the geometry that we can build and with, you know, widths of buses and lane, lane widths exactly now. And we should be presenting something to Lake and the Hills for their input to comply with, as we understand zoning requirements, hopefully before the end of next week. Last thing, I apologize, might not be on here, but it will be next time probably for sure, is Verizon and the Village of Algonquin are working together and want to get communication fiber to the water tower. They've been pursuing us aggressively for this. It benefits the village as they try to get all their buildings communicating hardwired and in addition, Verizon's had a goal to get a cell tower on top of that water tower now. And so what we've been talking about is giving them a access easement through our parking lot, just like the village gets, or a bus lot to get to the back to where they have a gate to get out to the tower. In addition, an underground utility easement to get a fiber cable to the water tower that would be underneath the edge of our asphalt on the side here and wrap around the front. What we've pursued with them for our benefit for this is to get the electric service for the water tower off of our building service. That is a lightning rod that we really don't need tied to our structure. It's caused us some impact, but I reflect on you, why in the world did we even do that in the first place? I want to remind everybody, when this campus was developed back in the day and we were going through the annexation process with the Village of Algonquin, they were kind enough to waive the $999,000 annexation fee for the development of this property from a dairy farm to its present condition. And as a good partner in that back in the day, the district chose to agree to give them an easement of the land that was acquired for the water tower and for the water plant up front. And then in a few months after that, they asked, well, we have to get power to that thing. And so they asked to connect to the building service for this building through the bus garage, switchgear. And it's been a little minor bit of a nuisance. They have electric resistant heat, which I hate. It's the most inefficient way to heat anything, so I'd love to get that off our building service as well. And I, so I think we'll benefit from the deal and we have very little intrusion on our operations. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Interesting. Any questions from the board or the committee?
This benefits the village?
Yes. Because they're going to get their fiber to the tower.
And we can't get the Huntley logo on that water tower?
Oh, I didn't ask. It's the Village of Algonquin.
Oh.
That water tower right here, behind the building.
The one here? Oh, I thought you were talking about the one.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Yeah, even I wouldn't push for that.
Maybe if we get the, the cell tower antennas on there, maybe they can paint the antennas with the logo on there instead.
How about DR Berkey Drive DR right here, there's an arrow.
All right, with that, we'll move on to eight dot three, capital projects report.
This is the second submittal on this project list for the board for the year. First one was in September where we looked at a long-term lifecycle analysis for the district and those particular large capital investments to preserve the district. Now, at this time, this round, we've asked all the leadership team, we've solicited their input for added value items they'd like to see added to the list. And altogether, if you add them all up, it's, and you compare that to our assessed value, this on page two, or not assessed value, but our net capital assets as valued by the fine firm that Mr. Altmeier's office hires once in a while to determine the value, it's only an investment of about 1.3% of our assets to preserve these assets. I think that's a real good investment and we've done a good job of preserving them. Another thing I'd want to say is this is all, how deep we go into this prioritized list unless the board chooses to, you know, direct us otherwise would be to, is all dependent on the FY19 budget approval. And that just would tell us how deep we can afford to go.
Any questions from the committee or the board?
Just a procedural question is when you look at the, like all the tier ones as an example, or the top priority ones, how does one get to the very top of that list? I mean.
I solicit the, the principals for their input and, and they make their own choice on their number ones.
I mean, that like very top, like the first one on the list, I'm assuming is effectively number one or is the whole category one number one?
Oh, I'm sorry, all the number ones would go together. I apologize, no, I understand what you're asking.
Transportation.
Well, it's, you know, we could call it the, we could call it the Zadman Center and it would be last, I suppose.
Adam Zare has that much pull.
Triple A, triple A service? I got you.
I think Adam was the first one to reply to this solicitation.
So prioritization wise, just hypothetically, you get half of, equivalent of half priority ones, that would just have to be figured out then?
I'm sorry.
You have 30 number one items. You'd have to draw the line somewhere if the money wasn't there.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to revisit this. It's not happened in the past, but I guess we, we'd have to do that, yes.
Any additional questions or from the board or the committee?
That was the, the money, leftover money from the high school. That was the money, leftover money from the high school thing that I didn't want to see it spent on that, so they're going to build it into the budget.
What item are you talking about?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
The terrace seating on the hill outside the tennis courts.
Okay.
Spending $45,000 to benefit 15 people.
Sounds like you got that addressed on your side of the bench. Right, okay. All right, any additional questions or comments from the board? All right, we'll move on to eight dot four, solar power install.
Thank you.
Opportunities.
I am going to jump in here, just because it's a financial opportunity and I had the opportunity to work with Doug a little bit on this, but Doug has done a ton of legwork, a lot of legwork on solar over the last several months and certainly looking into it in prior year. I'm learning a little bit, but not as much as Doug here. But what we are looking at, and we talked about this at the last board meeting a little bit, we talked about two different opportunities that we were looking at based on proposals that were submitted to the district, and one of them was a kind of a risk-free option. We had a few proposals with a risk-free option where a company would come in and install a solar array on our land, and it's really a lease deal. It's a property land lease type of deal with very little energy savings on the back end. So, we looked at the numbers for those proposals and we also looked at the numbers for an ownership opportunity. Guaranteed savings kind of performance contract from several different companies. And obviously with ownership, well, we've got a little more flexibility, I'd like to think, when, with the ownership deal, simply because if something goes sour, we can move those solar array panels. There's a little more flexibility with how we control it. But the benefit with an ownership deal is there is almost double the cash flow and double the savings opportunities that we would see over a 15-year period. And so the numbers are ranging anywhere from $4 million to possibly $7 million based on the quantity of the solar arrays that we put on our properties. Are we going to do one campus to all three campuses? The numbers, I'm quoting you, between $4 and $7 million would be, well, it's all three campuses, but are we going to cover 50, 60, 70% of our energy usage, or are we going to try to cover 90% of our energy usage? And there's pros and cons to that. But what we would like to present to the board is there is significant opportunity, significant cash flow and savings opportunities by going with the ownership model. And so what we would like to briefly talk to the board about is, is we would like a recommend, it's not a recommendation, we would like you to give us the thumbs up, the go-ahead, to continue not to just explore, but to issue an RFP, to go down this path and do the things we need to do so that we can make this reality. On the solar side, there's solar energy credits available, and time is of the essence here in Illinois as well as federally, because we want to get out in front of this so that we can maximize those credits coming back to the district. Because it is those credits that are really making this a sweet deal in a timely fashion. There are districts that did this a year ago and their numbers are ranging from $7 to $10 million of savings just because they get, they got in on the deal about the time that we were talking about it two years ago. So, so what we're asking the board for is kind of a thumbs up and a go-ahead to continue to move forward. Issue an RFP, right, and we'll see, we'll get a lot more good information that comes back, a lot more detailed information. And, you know, we'll have that for the board in a month or so, or two months, probably. Anything else to add, Doug? No.
So, I'll start. From a, an ownership standpoint, maintenance becomes a big concern. One of the big concerns in how much, what do we have to do? Do we have to add somebody who's an expert on taking care of solar panels? Do we have to keep an inventory of spares? I mean, there's a whole plethora of questions that go with that. Location, security, I would guess that the location is going to include on the, on the Marlowe campus, sorry, it just escaped me, but that back parcel of land that really is not conducive to doing anything with. So, that to me seems like a natural fit. And then it would come with direction from the board, I'm guessing, whether or not to do anything on the high school property as well in that location. And I don't know if there's space in this location, but those are additional questions. I've got a bunch, you know, so I'll just kick that off with those questions.
I talked to two districts that have implemented head installations fired up in the last nine months. I talked to a district that's had an installation fired up for years. And one that's had it up for years, Libertyville, I just reaffirmed with them, was something I heard indirectly, but the person that's in charge over there told me, Kurt, that told me that zero maintenance, no cleaning, nature takes care of it. Once in a while an inverter, it's plug and play. We've talked to a consultant who worked the state of Hawaii for 20 years. He says, write a good spec on your inverters. And I just talked at Crayslake, they put a 10-year warranty on the inverters. They stock a few. It's just something that once in a while will come up, but it's not a big deal. One of our providers has proposed, it's a very minimal cost for maintenance over time, but the worst that we might have to do is once in a blue moon pressure wash them or something if it really gets bad. If there's some kind of major development where there's construction dust flying in the air somewhere, but it should be very minimal. Locations, they, there's been, the proposals with the numbers marks thrown around, there's enough room on each campus for an installation. And this, those numbers are a sizable installation on all three campuses.
All three, okay.
Yeah, and there would also be an option that if we wanted to use the, you know, the high school roof, if we wanted to do something creative like a car port, a bus port, and put the solar panels above the 110 buses that we have out in the lot. You know, those are opportunities that we can certainly investigate. That might be a little more money, but we also have the property here that I think we're all pretty sure that we're not going to be utilizing in the next 15 years. So, I think we do have some pretty good opportunities for location.
Okay.
And a little more flexibility, especially with the ownership deal.
Other questions?
Questions? So, is the thought process to move this forward to look at solar power for the whole district and not just the high school as we've talked about in the past?
Correct, but certainly we would, we would build it kind of on a, you know, multi-bid, you know, option A, option B, option C, so that we could, we could look at it at the whole, but we could also look at it campus by campus.
Okay, and so, and you'll be looking to put together a proposal of an all-in bid, which would include the maintenance, any additional taxes for reusing the land in this fashion, things like that?
We'll look at the whole thing, yeah. And we'll, you know, we'll utilize the operations and maintenance committee and, you know, obviously keep the board apprised.
Work with the villages to make sure.
Right, I just think at this phase, this, this project should probably be on the board agenda for the whole board to discuss instead of in committee, but that would just be my recommendation moving forward, that at least at this phase, while they're looking for the board as a whole.
Right.
Direction, that it be a board topic.
No, and I would concur. I would concur too. That this is a big decision and for the kind of dollars and the timeframe involved here, I wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah, and I would, I would suggest that it'd be silly not to take that next step and do the RFP and find out what the costs are, because really, we can't make any decision as a board, or the community can't make any decision until we've got, we've got those numbers and we know that, and so we do have to take the next step to get there.
Right, correct, which is. And that's absolutely true, but it's important to note, you guys have looked at certain numbers that have led you down this path to recommend looking more at the purchase option as opposed to.
Right, right, and that's, that's the key, the key point here is that what you're proposing now is that whatever investigation you do is based on the recommendation that we do it as a purchase and not as a lease opportunity.
Land lease deal. Yeah, which originally the intention was land lease deals were easy, but they've done more and more legwork on this and they're seeing a much more compelling financial model here.
Yeah, and I have no doubt that as the numbers start coming up, you start pulling in the RFPs and investigation, that if that plays out, continues to play out, we're good. If you get any indication that it's better in another direction, you'll present that to us. That's, that's exactly where we need to be.
How quickly on this will there need to be movement or decision from our standpoint as a board?
The Illinois Power Agency has submitted the final rolls to the state, the third round, and they have a drop date for approval. And then it's going to be a horse race to the first offering, which will be the highest renewable energy credits to get on the list for the auction. So, the vision would be to have a sense of direction and have a partnership with someone and know what kind of quantity of those REX credits we want to bid for by the middle of April.
By April, okay. And that's doable? Okay. So, we have, we have, do you need any kind of direction from us other than that? That's enough, okay.
That's probably enough. The only other thing, go ahead, Mike.
Doug, on that, is this, is this akin to when we got the grant for the high school expansion? That if we snooze, we lose and we could end up not being left out in the cold if we don't get something in on time?
I've been reading a lot of the filed documents of the ICC of Light, and it just reinforces that early in more incentive has all energy incentives.
It just becomes diminished credits available, is what ends up occurring.
So, there's a certain number of credits that are available, and if we get in early, we have a chance of getting the lion's share of those credits, and the longer we wait, they get chewed up by other entities.
Right.
That's one part of it, and the other part of it is, is that the value diminishes over, as a second offering, a third offering, the value is diminished.
Okay. All right, so you have what you need from us. Any other discussion?
The only other discussion, I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on, I mean, I'm okay with it. It's just land usage in general, the general concept of committing certain amount of land. I mean, I'm pretty confident that the land they're discussing is not land that's very usable for buildings in the future. It's available land that we have on each of these campuses and I personally don't have an issue. I just want to make sure everybody else isn't.
No, I fully expect the exact land and square footage and all that will come out, come to play in the study, so.
Yeah, and what I've heard said so far is, we think there's a big opportunity out there and we'll get you the details. So, to me, that's a, to Don's point, it's a detail to be provided when they go through that.
No, right, okay. Yeah, I've just seen a little more detail in it and I kind of have a semi-idea where some of the stuff is potentially going, so I just, I'm not skittish about it, I just, you're going to have to see more information to know, yeah.
Okay. Yep, okay. All right, if there's nothing further, that'll be it for building and grounds for tonight. Legislative?
Okay, very briefly, the governor delivered his State of the, State of the Union, State of the State address, and just, I wanted to highlight just a couple of things that were talked about, which was, he seems to be having a, one of his policies is going to be regarding the unfair, unaffordable, and crushing property tax assessment system. So, that's going to be something that he's going to be pushing for. Education was only alluded to when he highlighted the historic reforms to end one of the most inequitable school funding formulas in the country. To that end, the House and Senate took swift action to override the veto of SBE 444. So, that's going forward, but Leslie, maybe you can give some explanation of this. It sounds like even though it's law, there's still some things that need to be done to finalize the formula. Does that make sense? Here's what I, yeah, here's what I, yeah. SB 444 makes changes necessary to the Illinois State Board of Education to begin calculating funding amounts to school districts under the new formula contained in Senate Bill 1947. There are additional changes that must be made to the new law before final determinations can be made on funding disbursements to school districts. So, it sounds like we have a law that sets a funding formula to be determined later. And I don't know how, what that means. Yeah, I, well.
We don't.
We have to read it before we know what's in here?
It's not clear, right.
Yeah, Mr. Fleck, I heard the exact same thing today from a few of the directors of the School Business Official Association Group, and we all have the same question, what does that mean? So, yeah, I heard that today.
Stay tuned for that.
Yeah, so, but I don't know what that means.
Right, and the General Assembly as well is a little confused with the numbers that are coming out from ISB, so we're just waiting for the correct numbers.
If ISB wrote a bill to correct the formula, well, why are we still making that statement?
Right.
Is the question. That's exactly how I feel, so. Okay, and that's all I have, so to, stay tuned. I wish our two middle, middle schoolers were still here to discuss this together, because I think they'd do a good job of it.
So, you mean there's a formula, but not a formula?
Yes.
What do you think about that?
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, item number 10, we have 10.1 ISB call for proposals, so we're looking for proposals that Dr. Schlückter was going to lead the discussion with.
She and I talked about that, so.
Would you like to?
Well, we could throw out an idea and then obviously have some conversation from the board as well. One of the topics that we looked at as a possibility would be the competency-based pilot at the high school. I thought that that may be an item to go ahead and write up and to possibly present.
No, that's a, that's a great idea. So, what we're talking about here is proposals for presentation at triple I, and I think we've had a lot of success in the past with presentations that have quantifiable results or some history to them. My concern about the competency was that maybe we don't have enough data post, you know, results on that. So, whereas I've made proposals like that before or suggested we do that, I think I see the value in getting a year or two under our belt before we actually do a presentation on it. And then by, by no means am I cutting it down. I love the idea, anything we can to brag about our district and promote the fact that we're a destination district. That, that's good, so. Anything else the board can think of along those lines? How about the superintendent search process?
Too soon.
By then.
We have even less data on that.
Well, by then, we'll already have.
We'll be experts.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have results, and I think there'd be a benefit to other school districts to see, you know what? You had a superintendent for 12 years, what was it like to go through the process of getting a new one? So, I think that would be a.
I actually think that would be a good, a good one, and it would be of interest to many, many districts that deal with that more often than we do.
Yeah, because I think we've, we've all attended the, either the superintendent search or the superintendent review sessions that the IASB puts on, and they're fairly static. They're not really involved. There's not, it's not like a workshop or a working session, whereas if we bring to them a real-life scenario, a recent real-life scenario, I think it might be well-attended.
Yeah, it seems that there's always one of those superintendent search presentations, sessions, one or two every conference. So, yeah, this time might be us.
And then the other thing, not to poo-poo Mr. Armstrong's wanting to discuss the Energy Star, but kind of stealing the thunder, maybe, maybe there's some value in presenting what was done in order to get, you know, obviously we have the advantage of having newer schools and it's going to be hard to tell schools that have buildings that were built in 1930 how to make them Energy Star compliant, but I think there are lessons learned. And with that, you know, when we talked about this last month, I noticed on the list was Barrington, and Barrington had some old schools. And maybe a unique partnership presentation where we talk about as districts, one with newer buildings, one with older buildings, you know, why we put a priority on that and how we achieved it might be an interesting presentation.
Thoughts? If I may add, when I came to work here, I initially thought that this district is so new, it should be more. so new, it should be more efficient, there should not be any opportunities. I came from a district that was very old, and the opportunities were overwhelming, it's just some people choose not to act on them. And I really think that the things that we use to create savings are opportunities for everyone, they were probably a little less for us, because, because of, we were newer to begin with.
Well, to that end, a couple of Triple I conferences ago, I was talking with another couple of districts about budget, and when I brought up the fact that we were saving quite a bit by looking at all our buildings, and all of the opportunities that were out there, and every, you know, every year, you would show us what those actual numbers ended up being, those two, two people that I were talking, I was talking to, had no idea that that was even an option for trying to work on their budget, it just shocked me that they didn't even consider it. So it might have some value to educate some of the other districts on what we're doing, and, and how, it's not just, well, we get better lighting in here, it's gotta do something better, no, you've calculated it down to the dollar, what we're doing, and showing those savings, and partnering up with certain people that give opportunities and rebates, I think, I think there's really something there that's worthwhile, yeah.
All right, we can maybe work on that, and build a little more structure around that one, I like the story that can be told, and we can take a couple of different angles, not just the Energy Star story, but, you know, how we, as a school district, optimize our revenue opportunities and our cash flow as a district by non-traditional means, through energy, so... Okay, cool, anything else? Okay, cool. All right, that takes us on to item number 11, Ms. Melendi, Community Relations, Student Outreach, anything there?
I don't have anything, unless, do you? Mr. Armstrong?
Just note, since you did mention the superintendent search, just for the community, if anybody hasn't been to the homepage, it's right there in the, in the middle, so any relevant updates for the community as we go through that process will be right there on the homepage.
Outstanding, thank you. Yeah, and we did have our public sessions yesterday and Monday, not a lot of attendance, but I guess, you know, we weren't necessarily expecting a huge outpouring.
Right, I popped into the Marlowe first night, and there was one person there, and then one person walked in, but they...
Counting you, or?
Mr. Durant said it was, it was, what?
Counting you?
No, not counting me, I got out of there before I had a seat, and he said that's normal, it's normal, that's typical, so, they weren't too concerned about it. The students at the high school had their focus group as well, and my understanding is that went very well. A lot of good ideas came out of that, so, we'll see.
One other thing under, we could have put this under legislation, or under community outreach, I'll mention it, somebody reached out to me, an actual committee precinct individual from one of the Grafton precincts, to ask me about the concept of Jack Frank's non-binding referendum, and, and how, how we see that, so I played a little bit of phone tag, I'll be, I'll be talking to her either tomorrow or next week, but it was really good to see someone was actually interested in the details behind what is obviously a populist type of, you know, referendum, so...
Right, and, and Mike Fleck went and spoke at Public Comment, so you might want to chat with him, and he had some really good, he had some really good points, and some good talking points, so...
I was talking to the hand, though.
I know, but...
All right, so with that, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the items identified in the agenda at 7:14 PM.
Second.
You have a motion in a second, can I have roll call?
Mr. Drazel?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Guerin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quigliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, we're in closed session.